Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call our meeting of the Lowell City Council to order, please join me in the council prayer. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for a direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted the state of wisdom to make decisions which would be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Thank you. Please join me in honoring America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and good evening. Roll call, Mr. Clerk.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Mendonza.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor Broderick.
Here.
Counselor Dakota.
Here.
Nine yays.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Former Counselor Rithi Young has asked that we have a moment of silence in darkened chambers for the hundreds of people who died tragically yesterday at a festival in Cambodia. And I know the mayor has asked also that the Cambodian flag be lowered at half-mast in honor of those who have passed.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If we could all rise in a moment of silence in darkened chambers for those that perished in Cambodia, as well as other Lowell residents who have passed since our last meeting. Getting right to the agenda, the first item, minutes of the November 16th meeting for acceptance motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Any discussion, changes? All those in favor of the motions, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Under city manager, responses to council motions and requests. Do we have any comments? Counselor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was pleased to see the report from the Division of Planning and Development about the update on the status of our, the plan going forward with respect to zoning and other matters, master plan, if you will. I know it's been 2003 since this was last updated, and as the report indicates, been substantial progress since that time in implementing many of the goals in that plan. The report envisions a process to update that, recites the numerous goals that have been accomplished to date, and I think it's a good piece of work and anticipates significant public input in going forward in updating the plan. So, I congratulate the department for undertaking this initiative. There'll be opportunity for the council and other constituency groups throughout the city to participate in the next few months, but I think it's important. I think particularly the last version has yielded significant improvements in zoning and other similar things, and I'm optimistic this is going to lead to similar improvements. So, I was pleased to have the report. Thank Mr. Manager and Mr. Becky for providing it.
Thank you, Counselor Martin. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also wanted to bring to, I guess, everyone's attention the good news, the Lowell stat update, result of Counselor Murphy's motion way back when to implement a city stat program. And the first update, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager, we got some good news, some savings and efficiencies, and hopefully continue it on in the future with some recommendations, and make a motion to refer this to the finance subcommittee, perhaps?
Motion by Counselor Broderick, seconded by Counselor Mendonza, that the report on the city stat be referred to the finance subcommittee. Counselor Caulfield?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to touch on this just briefly. It states in here that the city can receive $250,000 in fines over a period of years. Is that right, Mr. Manager?
That's great. The fines go back.
Right.
Several years, yes.
But you have it down here as $250,000 as revenue or savings, and we don't have a dime of that yet, don't we?
We're in the process of collecting that now. It's been identified as.
But you have it down as $563,000 as revenue coming.
It's included within what we project out as savings.
That could be over a period of years.
Excuse me?
It could be over a period of years before the city receives those fines.
It could be, I suppose, but we may have to track that down, yes. But it's all within this first year that we've identified that, and it wouldn't be counted each year after that. This is just what we've identified right now.
This has been an ongoing problem. I mean, I've known this for years, that tax liens and things of these fines have been there for years, and it's an ongoing problem with every city, not just Lowell.
You're correct, but these were fines that were not identified for liens until the work that was done.
But it states here in the last sentence of the paragraph that the city will receive revenue totaling possibly $250,000 as properties transfer ownership.
That's correct. That's why it's going to take some time. If they don't pay the bills now, it's going to take some time to collect those, but yes, we have identified those.
So, that could be over the next 10, 10 years, 15 years? Who knows? Could be over the next five years, but.
The interest that accumulates with that, though, if that's the case.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Caulfield. Any further debate on the motion? Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is, I think, important to note that that particular item was listed under one-time revenues and efficiency savings. There are $272,000 identified as annualized savings through development services, human relations, and workers' compensation savings. So, I think it's pretty clear from the report that this was, in fact, you know, the right time to put in place a program, to look at what we're doing and whether we're doing it efficiently. And one of the points that was made back now several months was that this isn't just about realizing savings, although that's certainly part of it. It's about improving our government operations, and one of the things that has been identified through the stat program is that mechanism through which some of these fines can be collected in a more timely manner. And so, and this all comes back to, you know, improving our code enforcement. It results in better quality neighborhoods. There are, this is really just a means to an end, but it is, it is good to see that it's already produced such good results, and I look forward to a greater discussion about where we take it from there at that finance subcommittee.
Thank you. Counselor Mendonza?
Yes, I mean, looking at this, the Lowell stat program, I think, has been a success in collecting these fines. I know one of the things that's identified is that we could have our own hearing officer for these civil violations, and that that would bring in these fines in a faster fashion, or at least reconcile them. But in my mind, even if we had only had half of a return on investment of $5 for every dollar spent, this would be a success. So, I'm pleased, and I look forward to its continued success for at least another couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Counselor Murphy?
We also received in our packets.
Excuse me, could I have a vote on this motion first?
Okay.
Vote to refer the Lowell stat update to the finance subcommittee. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Thank you. Continuing on with the city manager's communication, Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also had in our packets this week, a report back on the retiree health insurance information seminar to take place December 15th from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the Lowell Auditorium. One question was asked of me, whether we could make copies of the plans, the actual healthcare plans, available so that when notices get sent out, so that people can come up with questions prior to the meeting, and you can have a fuller discussion then.
Mr. Manager?
Absolutely. When, I'm assuming you mean when we go through the open enrollment process, Counselor, or are you speaking specifically of this?
In advance of this meeting, so that people would be able to have a better idea of what's going to be talked about there.
Okay. Let me see what we can do to put that together. The whole plans are somewhat cumbersome to put the whole thing out, but I think we could probably put some summaries out that.
Maybe at least a synopsis and links to.
Absolutely. And add some links to more detailed explanations of each plan. Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I probably got the same phone call from Dr. Bailey on this, that thought it would be a good idea to try and get the information out ahead, maybe a couple of weeks in front of the meeting, so that people have an opportunity to read and digest it, but also, which I thought was a great idea, and this is why she was an educator and I'm not, is an opportunity for them to maybe formulate their questions and get them ahead of time to their representatives, for the union representatives to sort through and maybe organize a bit, so that when folks, you know, when Blue Cross Blue Shield, any lead time we can give them, maybe they can have better prepared answers and facilitate the whole meeting. Requires some work on everybody's part, but I think that it might make for a more meaningful meeting, and, you know, any information we can provide online as well would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Anything else, communications? Motion by Counselor Mercia, seconded by Counselor Mendonza to accept the communications placed on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Next item on the agenda, we have a request for out-of-state travel. We have three of them this evening. Motion by Counselor Dakota, seconded by Counselor Broderick, that we take all three as one item. All those in favor taking the three together signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Anybody have any questions on, we have one from the police, two from the police department, health department, and career center, excuse me, I guess we have four. Move approval. Move approval by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Martin. Roll call.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Nine yays.
Thank you. A vote in city council order, transfer from the sale of property fund to the JAM Urban Renewal Fund, audited by the city council of the city of Lowell as follows, that the amount of $182,000 be transferred from sale of property fund account number 1701 to JAM Urban Renewal Fund account number 4523. Order recommended, introduced by Bernard F. Lynch, city manager. Second reading by title, if there's no objection. In city council order, transfer from the sale of property fund to the JAM Urban Renewal Fund. So, which of the council? Counselor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the manager, manager, I received, Mr. Manager, I received a copy of the transfer order, but there's no explanation. Could you let us know what the transfer is for in the JAM?
I'm going to refer to this to the city solicitor.
This is to cover, excuse me, this is to cover a settlement on one of the next-to-last of the property takings associated with the JAM project. This was for the Saab building, and it was a settlement, actually, that we were quite pleased with. It was actually well below the sort of proverbial splitting of plaintiff's assessment as well as appraisal, as well as ours.
Okay. Is this relative to the email that you would have sent out, Mr. Manager, or is that something?
No, that's a separate, that's, I think, our last taking that we're working on. This one was the next-to-last, if I'm correct.
Okay.
And so, this was one, as the solicitor pointed out, we went through the mediation process, and we finally, before we went into trial, and we were able to come up with a satisfactory settlement.
Okay, and this is from the sale of property account? I'm just kind of curious, what funds are in that? We're taking 182,000 out, does that leave?
I think there's still about $800,000 there.
The current balance is 334 because we had done a transfer.
Oh, right.
Three thirty-four.
Three thirty-four, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Any other questions? Motion to approve the vote by Counselor Mendonza, seconded by Counselor Broderick. Roll call.
Counselor Elliott.
Yes.
Counselor Martin.
Yes.
Counselor Mendonza.
Yes.
Counselor Mercia.
Yes.
Mayor Millenazzo.
Yes.
Counselor Murphy.
Yes.
Counselor Broderick.
Yes.
Counselor Caulfield.
Yes.
Counselor Dakota.
Yes.
Nine yays.
Subcommittee reports. The chair recognizes Counselor Caulfield. Subcommittee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee convened a meeting this evening due to a motion filed by Counselor Dakota, and the purpose of the motion was for the city manager and his staff to bring forward more information pertaining to zoning changes, whether it was repaving in a neighborhood, construction, et cetera. And many of the comments from the neighborhood association leaders was timing, try to get emails out in a better way, LTC, websites, and generally just improving the communications that is coming from the city manager's office. Counsel Rita Mercia also indicated that it'd be a great idea if Michael Damaris, who attends many neighborhood meetings, brought forward that information pertaining to different issues pertaining to neighborhoods. And Counselor Caulfield also said it would be just as a good idea to have to contact people, to get emails out to and get the information, and improve the communications. And that's the gist of the meeting. Manager said he would do everything humanly possible, along with Adam Becky, to make sure those communications are improved. It's a report of progress. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Caulfield. Anyone else? Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was a very good meeting and a very good report. There was one additional piece of information that was brought forward, I think, by the manager, some new software in the clerk's office, or the city has, that will hopefully potentially allow shortly, not only the transmittal of the agenda, but also the packet, most of the materials in the packet, which would also potentially allow the city to transmit the zoning board, planning board, and other boards and commissions' agendas, and the, as we all know, we get a packet of information with explanations, as we just asked for on the last vote. People at home don't get that. They see an agenda, or they get a card from the ZBA, and sometimes you have to be a technical expert to understand what it means. This will give them the benefit of having the information that we have or board members have, and it should be very enlightening and hopefully move forward. It's an exciting thing to have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Counselor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gist of the motion presented to us from the neighborhood groups was that they felt that they wanted to be kept in the loop, that they wanted to be informed, that they felt that laws that are passed that might pertain to their respective portions of the city and their little neighborhood areas, they wanted to be informed as to what would affect them if the zoning laws changed, and they said that they'd like to be notified before this happened, as compared to finding that zoning laws changed, and they weren't notified until like days later. And it was only a matter of fairness, and I think it's called transparency in government, and I think that's what we like to do, be partners, and this is one way of doing that, so it was an excellent motion, and I know we're going to comply with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Mendonza?
Yes, while listening to the discussion, one of the things that came up was that one of the difficulties might be in providing some of the plans in electronic form, and what I would suggest is that maybe it's time to consider, if it's already in the works, that third parties submit their plans in electronic form and save us any effort in scanning them in. I know that by and large, 99% of these are done on computers, so creating the electronic form to submit to the city is just a matter of having the right format that's compatible. So, I just make that a form of a suggestion.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else on the report? Motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by Counselor Dakota, accept the report as a report of progress. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Any other subcommittee reports? Hearing none. Moving on to the wire inspector, report of Comcast to install a conduit in House Street and East Merrimack Street. Motion to accept and adopt the accompanying order by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counselor Caulfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Next item, National Grid to place conduit, 170 Merrimack Street. Motion by Counselor Mendonza, seconded by Counselor Elliott, to accept the report and accompanying order. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. We have some petitions this evening. Attorney Uliott is representing Loon Hill Development, requests the city accept extension of Rita Street. Motion to refer to the law department by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Caulfield. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. Aspera Wireless, 642 Gorm Street, requests 215-minute parking spaces. Refer to the traffic engineer by Counselor Caulfield, seconded by Counselor Mercia. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, to vote. We have, under claims, we have two personal injury and one property damage. Refer to the law department by Counselor Murphy, seconded by Counselor Mendonza. All those in favor signify by saying aye. To vote. Thank you. Moving on to the motions part of the agenda, the first motion by Counselor Mercia. Motion, request the city council rescind its previous vote on July 13, 2010, reference to filing of special legislation which would authorize the city of Lowell to make certain changes to the current practice of the negotiation and purchase of insurance policy and/or policies for employees, retirees, and dependents.
Second for discussion.
Second by Counselor Caulfield. We do have five, I believe, five people registered to speak. I don't know if Counselor Mercia wanted to be heard first, or we just invite our guests to speak? Do you want to do that first?
I think the proper protocol is to have the people speak.
Okay, thank you. The clerk will call your name, and I would again remind you that we do have a five-minute rule here in the chamber.
James Malloy, 138 Parker Street.
Evening, Mayor Millenazzo, members of the city council. My name is James Malloy. I'm chair of the Insurance Advisory Committee. And I might add, I receive no compensation from any union or from the city on this, and I've been the chair since January of 1992. I'm here tonight, as I was last week, to ask you to rescind the motion that provides for a home rule petition to give the manager the power to plan his own design of insurance. The, and I might add, just at this point, we have a Health Insurance Advisory Committee meeting scheduled for the 30th of November, 10 o'clock, in the mayor's reception room, and I might also add, I hear tonight something about December 15th, and that's the first I've heard of it, but going on from there. The, as you're all aware, the city is self-insured. We have Blue Cross Blue Shield as our third-party administrator, and at this point, the only way the city can lower the cost of health insurance is to shift it from the municipal side into either the retirees or the active employees. Now, the retirees, there's 1,210 retirees on Medicare with the carve-out A and B program. There's an additional 98 with just the carve-out A. So, now, these 1,308 Medicare recipients cannot have a PPO under Medicare regulations. So, there are only two other programs offered at present. One is MedX, which is fairly decent, but would have a $50 deductible per year on each retail pharmacy prescription. That's a pretty good chunk for a retiree. The other program is the Blue Care for Seniors with a three-tier program, and it goes from, well, your mailing prescriptions, your retail pharmacy prescriptions would go from a 20% copay to a 10, 25, 35, and then for the mailing prescriptions would go from $5 and $10 to $20, $50, and $70, which is quite a lot to be asking, I think, for retirees, particularly those who have been retired for some time now. The, I understand that you've all been under a lot of pressure from the, Mr. Wallace and the editors of The Sun, and I'd like to take a moment just to address those comments. And I had it listed by each day, but I don't think that's necessary, but they did state that I accused manager Lynch of signing a death warrant. I did not. I said that you, the council, if you allowed this to go forward, would be signing, possibly signing a death warrant for some of the retirees. The, and they haven't let up on a death warrant. They loved that statement, I guess. The, they also stated that it was all dramatic. Well, you know, if you start, well, let me go on first, and I'll come back to that. The, there are, according to the last thing I read in The Sun, two members of the school committee who want to speak on this, and they are going to encourage you to raise the contributions by the members from 25% to 50%. And this is one of the things I feared might happen if planned design were to go through. Now, you stop and think for a minute. If you're at a restaurant and you raise the prices overnight, double them, what's going to happen to your clientele? If The Sun turned around and raised their price from 75 cents for their paper to $1.50 immediately, what would happen to the paper? Circulation would drop, the advertising revenues would drop, and the paper would be struggling to survive. Well, these retirees, if you're going to raise their contribution from 25% to 50%, many of these people are going to be really struggling to survive. They're going to drop their insurance, and many of them, unfortunately, who do drop it, will pass away because they didn't get proper medical care, didn't get the proper prescriptions. And that's dramatic, I guess, but I don't know how else to put it without having it be dramatic. Well, I guess all I can do is ask you to vote in favor of rescinding that petition. Vote in favor of Counselor Mercia's petition. I'd like to thank you all for your attention and wish you all a happy Thanksgiving.
Anthony Diaz, 28 West Street.
Good evening. Thank you for your time, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city manager Lynch. I'll keep my remarks very brief. I request that the council vote down. Counselor Mercia has motioned, and I'll explain why. It took the city manager a lot of credit and a lot of courage to bring this forth. This is, let it go. You took the vote. It wasn't close. Stand by your vote. Don't cater to those that are going to come out and complain. I know we're coming on an election year. I ask you to stand to your vote. You know, it's a $39 million hit in the city budget. If this, you, let it go. Let the procedure go. Let it go through the legislature. There's no guarantee the legislature's going to pass it. There's no guarantee the governor's going to sign it. At least give the city manager the opportunity to do it. At least bring it out there. At least maybe it'll force the unions, it'll force everybody to the table and discuss this. This isn't an issue that's affecting just the city of Lowell. I've had the opportunity to visit quite a few cities and towns. This is an issue that's across the state and at the state level. This needs to be addressed. Somebody needs to take a line in the sand, and I give Mr. Manager a lot of credit in bringing it forward. You know, if you turn around and vote it, you know, there's not much in the budgets to cut. Do we cut services that everybody uses? You know, I ask that the council oppose the motion and vote it down. Thank you very much.
Jim Leary, 449 Parker Street.
Thank you very much for the time. I appreciate it. I'll try to be brief within five minutes. I think when I watched last night, last week's Tuesday meeting, my biggest concern was, I don't think every single folk, you know, person out there listening really understood the financial challenges that the entire city, you know, nay, the state or the country are going through. But then I felt about it, and I said, you know, I could sit here and argue numbers, I could argue statistics, and it really doesn't matter. My premise for coming here is twofold. One, you know, you are making a major decision that impacts. One, you know, you are making a major decision that impacts, you know, major, every single citizen in the city one way or the other. It's not an easy job, and I felt as an elected member of the school committee, I had an obligation to stand up one way or the other. Let me start off by saying that it's not your fault that you even have to address these healthcare issues. It's not. This is, it's nobody's fault in this room, but I think it's an issue that does cost dollars and cents. And I have a lot of friends who have retired, and I've got, you know, copies of your emails coming in saying that we think that you're dramatic. I don't think you're dramatic. I think you're concerned, you're scared, and you're angry. There's nothing wrong with that. I'm scared and I'm angry as well. I'm scared that I'm going to look people in the eye and tell them, I haven't fought enough for your job as I lay you off. I'm going to do that this year. You and the council are going to do that this year. You're going to do it again next year. So you have a tough situation, you have a catch-22. You know, I don't, you know, let's be honest, I don't think the teachers or the retirees or the police officers or the firefighters are selfish. And I've never seen a teacher that's been selfish in my entire, you know, I went to school, went to college, my father was a teacher, retired teacher. Isn't it, no one's selfish, you don't hate the children. I wouldn't bring a child in here and say, make a choice. I wouldn't do that, your choice is too difficult. But the reality is, you're going to be faced with, on the city side, potentially a five percent local aid cut. Right now, if it's level funded, we're looking at nine million dollars. Now, I know these numbers go over your head, they whizz around, and it's dramatic, that is dramatic. What do you do? School department alone has wiped out fifteen million dollars in the past three years. That's just a local budget. Title I numbers have gone. I mean, that's been since I've got on the, the school committee, it's about a one million dollar cut every year. The argument is, well, you're losing students. Well, we're not losing that many, and we're getting a lot back from the closure of the charter school. We're also getting students from all over the world, from Afghanistan, Iran, good folks who don't speak the English language, and we have to come up with some resources to pay for their education. Special ed costs, which I could, we could have a whole meeting just on special ed, and I think we're good, unfortunately, the city council are going to be a part of that, those costs have dramatically risen. They're way beyond the average cost per student of twelve thousand dollars. They're forty thousand and higher. The reimbursement rate, because the state does not have the money, has gone from seventy percent down to, I think, thirty-eight percent. These are just the facts, and I know your position's a horrible position. I'm not going to sit here and say to someone, I'm going to change your opinion and hopefully, you know, ease your fears. I wish I could. Let's, let's just take a couple of things with the numbers. If you did remove Master Medical, right now for the entire city, it's two-point-seven That would save a lot of jobs, that's fact. It would change folks' healthcare to go to a PPO. PPO is a fine plan, you're not going to believe me, don't take my word for it. You shouldn't. Yeah, and it, it's, I think it's important, though, that you listen to your union president's word and folks that they bring into the area that suggest that the PPO plan's a pretty good plan. I'm going to commend and give a compliment to Paul Georges tonight. He has worked like a dog so you guys could try to have Master Medical and have it never-ending. He does, he has reduced the cost. He said three million last week, it's really two million, but that's pretty significant, that's huge, and he should be acknowledged and thanked for it. However, there's still, if you just remove Master Medical, it's two-point-seven million dollars in the hole. We're, again, if it's level funded, we're nine million. I don't know what you do. You, you don't make anybody happy walking out of here. I appreciate that, and that's why I felt I had an obligation to come down here and say, you know, I'm in it too, for whatever it's worth. That's before, now, the manager get into three to five million costs, that's when you go into the GIC. That's when you get up to the five million dollar savings. It's complicated. I don't blame Counselor Mercy for bringing up the motion, because anybody who's watched this is frustrated. It's not easy. It's really not supposed to be easy. It's not easy to come up here and say, hey, you know, your challenge with potentially a life-threatening disease, and I'm saying to you, a little, you know, forty-three-year-old guy saying to you, I want to take that away and give you a PPO. That's not easy, and I know people who are fighting for the life for cancer, who are on Master Medical and don't have the time to be worried about it. However, I know people who are on HMOs who have fought cancer and have survived. It's not easy to come up here and do that. I don't want to do it. It's politically advantageous for me for not to be here to put my head in the sand. But at the same point, next year, I'm going to lay people off, and I'm going to look them in the eye, library media specialist. They're not coming back. I apologize for raising my voice, I wish I really didn't. I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate everybody's involvement in it, it's not easy. Again, you're not to blame, neither are the folks here, it's not your fault. Unfortunately, because you don't have action in Washington to reduce cost, you are faced with a choice. Either you cut massive amounts of people, raise it to your tax levy of four-point-nine million, or you make some changes. Thank you very much, and everybody, please, there's a lot to be thankful for, you live in a great country, and I want to say every Thanksgiving to everybody, and take care.
Thank you.
Jerry Dunn, thirty-five Jackson Street, Drake at Mass.
I want to thank the mayor and the city council to let me express what's going on. First of all, I'm one of the retirees that you people are going to be voting on tonight. Let me explain, I've been on the city thirty-three years, I was the ex-president of Ashby Union, and I don't know if the manager has include you people exactly what's going on. Anybody that has retired, and they're over sixty-five years old, they cannot go on the HMO and the PPO, they got to stay on the Master Medical. We brought this up, the manager knows all about it. Now, let me explain one thing, the city manager's laughing, but, all right. There are the school department, public works, fire and police, some of them that are not sixty-five, they were on the Master Medical, they choose to go on H, HMO and PPO, that's saving the city a lot of money. I don't know if you people are informed about that. I'm trying to keep you informed of what's going on. Second, the thing I want to bring up is, the senior blue that he, the manager, has come forward to the retirees, it's, it's a debt sign, as far as I'm concerned. Right now, Master Medical, like I'm talking about anybody over sixty-five, they get prescriptions, generic five dollars, ten dollars for the regular, okay? This senior blue, for a prescription, one prescription, thirty-five, I think Jimmy already brought this up, two prescriptions, we're talking forty-five, fifty, then for three prescriptions, and a lot of these retirees have got more than three and four prescriptions that they have to get. This would be, you'd have to be a millionaire or have at least three retirements to pay for these prescriptions out of the senior blue. But now we'll get back to the medic. This is the one that they're proposing. The only trouble with that is, a lot of school personnel, police and fire, haven't paid into Social Security, so you can't get on this medic unless you have the Medicare A and B plan, and a lot of them didn't pay into Social Security, so they wouldn't qualify for this, and that's not fair to them. So, in letting you know, I just hope that you take into consideration about the retirees, not only me, a lot of them. I was dedicated to the city of Lowell, and you can look up any of these records of any of these people, we're more than grateful if you rescind it. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, I want to clear something up. Reader, I did misspeak last week, and Jimmy just told, explained. The savings to the school department last year on our effort to educate our members was just over two million dollars this year, one and a half million last year, for total three-point-five over the two. That's not including the savings on the school, on the employee side, too. That's another twenty-five percent. But it has been a substantial savings, and I appreciate it. It's the first time anybody on the school committee has acknowledged that we've made that effort, and it has resulted in a savings. And I appreciate it. But there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of misinformation. If you read the papers this week, listened to the radio, you would find that there were statements saying that the Master Medical doesn't exist in any other community. There's twenty-two communities in the state that have Master Medical being offered to either pot or all of their employees. It is not as scarce, and that includes regional vocational schools that might include a number of communities under the same plan. The Master Medical in the city of Lowell is extremely cost-effective for Master Medical plans. Analysis of the Boston Retirement Plan, which is the Master Medical, Blue Cross Blue Shield Master Medical, shows that Lowell's Master Medical costs two-thirds of what it costs for the Master Medical that retirees have in Boston. It's more expen, and as a matter of fact, in Boston, the Master Medical plan, our Master Medical plan is four thousand dollars a year cheaper than their PPO. So it all depends on how you look at it. Our history here for the last twenty years, since we went to a self-funded program, has shown significant savings. In fact, back in the early days, some of the folks on the Insurance Advisory Committee who've been around here for a while, would tell you that we went for a series of months without premiums being paid by the city or the employees in the early years when we went to a self-funded program. The difference in Boston is they're buying the product over the counter from Blue Cross Blue Shield. Self-funding the program means that you get a discount, you, essentially you eliminate the profit for Blue Cross other than the service fee that they charge for handling the money. There are some essential issues having to do with this home rule petition. It bypasses collective bargaining, and as I said last week, we came to a gentleman's agreement with the city, with the school committee, and the city manager, and the mayor at the time, to offer our members three plans. The city manager had previous to that, brought in Copman and Page, they came with an interpretation that they had to offer us the HMO around the bargaining table, not at the bargaining table, and when I asked members on the school department's side not to buy into the HMO until we collectively bargained it, the open enrollment period went for ten days, and I think there was seven or eight or ten people or something that jumped to the HMO. When they stood strong together, that's when we were able to come up with a solution with the school committee to offer three plans. There was an incentive for us to move some of our members from the more expensive plan to a cheaper plan that lasted one year. We were successful at bringing in Boston Benefit Partners, it educated a lot of people, and they made the move, and we continued to do it two years after that, even though we were under no obligation to do it because it was the right thing to do and it saved money for the community. As you know, I'm sure you've read it, thirty-six, thirty-seven percent of our members are still in Master Medical. If we've moved almost two out of three of our members out of Master Medical, is that enough? Is that more than halfway? Is that reasonable? It's not for me to decide whether or not people who came up and spoke at this podium last week are over insured because they have Master Medical, that's for them to decide, and that's what we negotiated, and that was the agreement, and that's the way I grew up in this town. When someone gave their word, they lived up to it. They didn't try. I heard the city manager this week, or it was in the paper anyhow, about he takes a hard line at the bargaining table. We've had no conversations really at the bargaining table. The conversation was done three years ago, when Copman and Page came in and he tried to bypass collective bargaining, and we had a conversation as a result of that, when we didn't jump. And this year, there's really, we're in negotiations, but essentially the position that's, that's being offered us is accept, accept the, the home rule petition. So there really isn't any collective bargaining going over health insurance at this particular point, but without going into that any further, isn't this an attempt to bypass that, too? Seems to me the statement shouldn't have been that he takes a hard line at the bargaining table, it should be that he tries to avoid the bargaining table. Now, the fact is, we working on our own, we had, again, under no obligation to bring in Boston Benefit Partners and educate folks, and I'm sure you saw the editorial and you got a letter or an email from us yesterday, making an offer to bring in Boston Benefit Partners into educate the seventy-two percent that the city manager refers to, who are now in Master Medical, and many of them could go because they're under sixty-five, they're not Medicaid eligible as of yet, and they could go to a cheaper plan, but there's been no outreach by the city manager with any of that population for years. Some of our teacher retirees who had retired fairly recently have bought into the HMO, all the PPO, and made that choice because when we invited our active members to these seminars, some of the retirees came to it. My question is, if indeed, over three years, we have saved through an education program about a little less than five million dollars for both the employer and the employee, then why not give the retirees the dignity they deserve for the contribution that they've made and allow them to make informed choices about plans? I honestly, these people are teachers by nature, and many of your city employees are almost self-sacrificial. They're generous in spirit, they're generous to their contribution to the city. They will not just simply say no, they will at least look at it, particularly if it's put in a way, or they're informed in a way with people that they trust, so that they can understand the variables and the various plans. We're going to have some difficult times ahead, we know that, really tough times. Mr. Leary just brought it up. But would you ask us, or would you expect us to make some kind of gesture or some kind of effort to heal the harm that we're certainly going to feel over the next six months or a year going into the next fiscal year? And at the same time, try to pull the health insurance plans out from under these retirees and active members that need it? I don't have the heart to do it, and I'll fight like hell to make sure it doesn't happen. I'm asking you to honor what Rita's saying, you can always go back with the home rule petition later, and I will say that if the votes aren't there to, to withdraw the home rule petition, I think we've been effective in articulating our concerns to you to make sure that you live up to what you need to do to make sure that the policies concerning retirees and active members are followed. I would ask you to rescind and follow Rita's lead on this. You can always put the home rule petition back in place after you've developed guidelines, you've brought it to a subcommittee, that I believe was referred to before by Mr. Murphy, and do it in a more thoughtful way. Right down to bringing this to the, to, to you to vote it on on July thirteenth, with no notice to unions, all the people that would be impacted, and no public hearing, was just wrong. I heard earlier a discussion about transparency. You certainly can't call that transparency. City manager's sincere, and I'll, I'll roll it up because I know, I thank him, Mr. Milonazzo. Since the city manager has been here, he has made it his agenda. There's no question in anybody's mind that the elimination of Master Medical is high on his list. No question about it. And what ultimately will end up happening is there will be a cost shift to the employees. He's proposed a coalition-type bargaining that's not recognized under state law, but he brought in with some other fancy attorney from out of town who advised him on health insurance issues. Whether that'll be effective or not depends on how many unions want to play. But the point is, this isn't the right way to treat city employees, it's not the way I'm used to being treated, it's not what I've seen in my almost thirty years of working here and living here before that. I'm asking you to intercede and intervene on behalf of the employees and the retirees. I'm asking you to withdraw the home rule petition, but if you don't, at least play at active pot in overseeing the activities of the city manager, who has made it absolutely clear that the only thing that he will accept is elimination of Master Medical. I could come here and say I could save you millions of dollars, but it still would fall on deaf ears. It would still fall on deaf ears because that is his agenda. Don't let that happen. There's twenty-two other communities that do still have Master Medical, it is not, it is not invisible, it is out there. And allow people to do the right thing and exercise their choice. Thank you.
You make the motion want to be heard first, then I'll recognize Council Caulfield.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last Tuesday, the performance that this council witnessed should never have happened. What took place last Tuesday should have happened on Tuesday, July thirteenth, when the initial introduction to this healthcare plan design was taken, but it didn't, because in my opinion, no one really knew about this vote until the vote was over, and that was that. Letters were sent out notifying them, but they arrived two days later after the fact. I'm not saying that, that's what someone of, said last week, and I, I was appalled by that. I don't think that that was fair. This council just approved a motion This council just approved a motion for the neighborhood groups about changes in the zoning laws that affect neighborhoods. It was then referred to the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee. We made a meeting here this evening before this council meeting started, and I think it was fairly right to do. How would they feel, these neighborhood groups, if the city sent out a letters informing them about a zoning change that was gonna affect their neighborhood, and they got it two days after the fact and the votes were already taken? Would that be fair? Well, that's what happened here. No one referred this to a finance Subcommittee for further discussion. I certainly didn't realize that the retirees were excluded from further input and they did not have a seat at the table. I didn't realize that. All we knew, and I wrote it down on my agenda on that July meeting, because I save every single meeting, I think since 1995, I have every single agenda, and it's probably the Health Department will be over tomorrow to make me clear it up, but it's there. And I looked back in July, and I wrote down that we were informed that this vote would save anywhere from $3.5 to $5 million for the taxpayer, and I wrote it down, because I thought that was important. Now, who in that room that day wouldn't wanna do that? Who, who would blame us, councilors, for voting yes on that? But through the efforts of talking with each other, and we learned that 63% of the teachers and retirees opted to give up Master Medical and take an HMO or a PPO and save, well, let's say $2 million or whatever slash substantial savings, and that already has saved that money through the healthcare design plan was not even voted on in the legislature yet, and they still save that much money. What we also learned is that employees and retirees are not adequately informed on the options and what will be available to them, and what does this mean when this passes, what options are available. We learnt about two already, and we learnt how extremely high that will be. I certainly know that healthcare costs are costly and escalating to a degree that is almost impossible to keep up with. I know that. I certainly know that we must provide city services. I know that we must control spending. I know this is a way to do that. I said that time and time before, and I appreciate, Mr. Manager, your hard stance at the bargaining table. I know it's not easy to stand up to this guy behind me, but we need you to do that. We need you to do that, but I need more, I need more. What we learnt last Tuesday was that promises were made that there would be discussions, but there weren't any. But because of last Tuesday's discussion, I learnt that you're scheduling a meeting, or a seminar, if you will, on December 15th from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Lowell Memorial Auditorium with representatives from Blue Cross Blue Shield for an educational presentation on the benefits of a PPO, and I firmly believe that discussions can be had. It's a shame that I'd have to make a horrific motion like this to get, to know more about it, but I believe it's a move in the right direction that, and this is what I'm asking for, this is what I mean when I say I want more. What we just had at the Neighborhood Traffic Subcommittee meeting was transparency in government at its best, and everybody here ran with people saying, "We wanna know what's going on in government." I wanna know what's going on too. I want information. I'm only wanting what they want. I want information, I want dialogue, I want clarification, I want respect, and above all, I want communication, and I think we've admitted that we could do a better job at it. I could do a better job at it. I didn't do a better job on July 13th. Did I make a mistake in July? Yes, I did. The mistake I made was to vote on an important issue and not adequately allow for proper notice to those involved. It almost seemed like the rush was on. The mistake I made in July, Mr. Manager, was not holding you accountable to be informative and fair to the retirees. I hope that this motion does that, and I think it will, I really think it will. I like to give you the benefit of the doubt. I don't wanna embarrass my colleagues by taking a vote, I'm not gonna do that, 'cause I don't know, maybe I have the votes, maybe I don't. I'm leaning towards the fact that I probably wouldn't. It's not about that, it's about coming together for the sake of the city, for a happy medium, to help the taxpayer as well, to help the people to be informed. I, I know that I'll probably be booed, but I, I made a drastic move here this evening. This was a drastic move with this motion. I didn't think that I should have to make a drastic move, but I'd almost feel like postponing indefinitely this motion so that I could bring it back at any point and have this happen again and again until we finally meet and decide what we're gonna do. We can make promises all day, but you have to keep them. We have to hold you accountable, Mr. Manager, to be tough at the bargaining table, but at least meet. That's like saying, "I'd like to win the lottery, oh, I'm praying to God I do, but yet I never buy a ticket." And that's what's happening here. I promise you that I'll do the right thing, but we haven't met yet, but I'm meaning to. And that's all I'm asking, Mr. Manager, and I don't want you to be disturbed or whatever, but I think you're headed in the right direction, you're headed in the right direction. And I'll leave this open for discussion of my colleagues. I really, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Caulfield and Counsel Broderick.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Once again, I wanna thank everyone for coming down here this evening and coming to the podium and expressing your views, and it's the democracy that we live in. If we accomplished one thing last Tuesday, the manager has decided to have a meeting December 15th, and the editorial from Jim Campanini, I feel, was extremely fair. Yet, let me finish, please, let me finish. The editorial said, "Stay the course," but it also stated, "The retirees deserve a seat at the table." Mr. Manager, you will have that meeting December 15th at the auditorium from 3:00 to 5:00, and you also stated to me, and you did publicly in the paper, that you should, or you will have a representative at the table.
The, the meeting is taking place on the 15th, and we're working on ways to include the, to have dialogue with the retirees.
Thank you, thank you.[1074.14][1074.14](LAUGHTER)
Now-- It's not, it's not the same thing, and I, we're still trying to work out how this, logistically, how this can be accomplished.
Okay, I, I've been in discussion with members of the legislature this week, and the petition that was filed by this city council will not come before the legislature until May or June of next year. May or June of next year. I've done some extensive research on this issue. On the city side of government, and I wanna thank Tom Moses for bringing this information forward, and every counselor has that information as well. There's 828 city employees that have insurance. 189 of those employees have Master Medical. There's 1,400 school employees, 509 of those employees are on Master Medical. It's broken down a percentage-wise. On the city side, Master Medical is 22.8%. On the school side, it's 36.3%. Active PPOs, 11.59%. On the school side, it's 24.86%. Listen to this carefully. The active HMOs on the city side is 65.58%. On the school side, it's 38.79%. I haven't heard from one employee that has changed from Master Medical to an HMO Blue. I haven't had one complaint, and either has Manager Lynch, and I don't think anyone on the school side as well. The cost of Master Medical is 25% more costly to the employee and the city. I belong to a health club. I get reimbursed $150 a year for that. You do not get that from a Master Medical. Paul Georges said, "We must heal and harm and be an active part of this dialogue." I will be an active part, I will attend that meeting December 15th, and every meeting the manager has with the employees of the city, school side, city side, and retirees, I will be there, and I imagine my colleagues will be as well. Now, I'm just gonna read, and I received some information from the school department as well. I wanna thank them for that. HMO Blue, medical care, general office visit, it's $5. Master Medical, it's 20% copayment. Medical care, nonroutine, urgent, it's $5 for HMO Blue, a 20% payment for Master Medical. The, um, the, here's, here's another issue I wanna bring forward. Preventative routine cholomastomy, it's $5 for an HMO Blue, you're not covered under Master Medical. Routine adult examinations, it's $5 for Master Medical, $5 for HMO Blue, you're not covered under Master Medical. Routine hearing examination, it's $5 for HMO Blue, it's not covered under Master Medical. There is nothing wrong with an HMO Blue plan. As far as I'm concerned, it's as good, or equally as good, as a Master Medical plan. Look at the amount of employees we have in the city on that plan. The, um, the cost for the school department, Mr. Manager, I received this information today, is $17,604,810. What is the cost to the city, city side of government for medical?
The health insurance budget for the city side?
For the city, yes, just for the city.
About 27 million?
27 million? So you're saying that it's $44 million for healthcare in the city?
39 is the total for--
Well, these figures, you know, that I, I'm getting--
Again, Counsel, I'm talking off the top, you, you have the figures in front of you, it's--
I don't have the city, I don't have the city in front of me. I'm a senior citizen, I'm retired, and I know what's running through the retirees' minds. They're afraid, and they're scared that your insurance is gonna be taken off you, and you're gonna be left with nothing. That is not so. I, as a city council, and my colleagues, will not allow that to happen. Mr. Manager, what plan are you gonna be offering the retirees? HMO Blue or PPO, or they have a choice?
Well, I, again, we, we're still in the negotiation stage here, and--[1413.24][1413.24](LAUGHTER) If, given my agenda, as Mr. Georges just put it, I would offer the PPO and the HMO, and for the Medicare people, I'd have the, the MedX plan, that would be supplemented in some way to make it even better than the, the COBRA plans that they have now.
A gentleman called me, I hope you, I hope you can answer this question. A gentleman called me today from Florida, and he watched the meeting last Tuesday, the next day or whatever. He was extremely concerned. If he went from a Master Medical to an HMO Blue, would he be covered in Florida or any other state?
No, he would not.
You're not covered in Florida.
Not with an HMO, but with the PPO you are.
PPO you are.
That's right.
So there's that option.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, the--
Yes, the retirees can have a PPO.
I'm gonna yield the--[1482.42][1482.42](LAUGHTER) Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna yield the floor because my colleague would like to speak as well. But this issue came about, and it shouldn't have come about last Tuesday if Manager Lynch had a meeting last August or September.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just respond to that. There was a comment made earlier tonight that we, you know, we, we haven't bargained, we haven't, you know, haven't even bargained yet. I've had two meetings now with the unions to try to sit down and hammer out the process in which we're going to bargain. That's the stage we're at now with this. We, we, the council passes Home Rule petition to allow us to move forward to do plan design similar to the way the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does plan design. Now, I'm not sure what's gonna come of that at the legislature, but at least it sends a message to the legislature that we wanna play by the same rules that they play by, because we have financial issues as well. But in the meantime, I have reached out to the unions and said, "Let's sit down and negotiate under what Mr. Georges refers to as," well, I'm not sure quite what the words were that you used, Paul, but it is coalition bargaining under Chapter 150E. Unfortunately, to date, a number of the unions have agreed to it, and a number of unions have not agreed to come to the bargaining table, and the Teachers Union is one of those that has not agreed to come to the bargaining table. So to say that we're not willing to come to the bargaining table is untrue. We are more than happy to come to the bargaining table. We wanna be at the bargaining table, we wanna try to hammer something out, making this whole Home Rule petition, although I still think it should go through, making it unnecessary to deal with the problem. I'd rather try to hammer it out. But to, so, you know, that, I, I think is, is important. The, the other part, though, that's important to that is this notion that we don't communicate. If you look at the numbers, 65% of the active employees, as Counsel Caulfield just pointed out, are on the HMO. Another, almost 12%, are on the PPO. That would not be accomplished without communication and education. We've been working with the employees. The schools, I'm happy to see that finally we got them off of 100% Master Medical, and I do think the PPO was an important part of that, but none of that would have happened unless we did play hardball and forced an HMO as a possibility. But if I could have the same respect that I have given to the members here and not interrupting as you have spoken, with regards to doing the education, Counselor, we weren't, I have no problem having these seminars. I, I think it's great that the school teachers have agreed to have Boston Benefit Partners come in again, happy to do that. I think the city should be having seminars of this sort, but the purpose of doing the education is to, once we make a decision, that we're able to do that. Right now, we're still in the bargaining phase. I have not dragged my feet, the administration has not dragged its feet in working with, to try to get information out there. We do it every year, we hold health affairs, we send out materials, we make ourselves available, we have Blue Cross reps at City Hall to meet with people, we make everyone aware of this. We're more than happy to do that, but it hasn't been a case where we didn't do it back then when we should've. The situation was, we were still in the, and still are, really, in the phase of trying to work with the unions to try to set up the process of negotiating these changes, to try to make something happen. If there are concerns regarding the aspects of the health plan that we're bringing forward, bring them to our attention, let's see if we can do something. There are a couple of union presidents that have had very good recommendations of areas of weakness that they, or concern that they'd like to see us address. We're gonna try to work on those, to see if, you know, there's some holes in coverage that maybe we need to address. But, so, again, we have not ignored the retirees, we have not ignored the employees, we've been still trying to work through the process of how we're gonna make this coalition bargaining work, and hopefully the school unions will participate in that process. They've indicated they're willing to bargain, let's see if they really do it. I'd like to see it happen, I think we can achieve something by doing that. As for the question that keeps on coming up about whether the PPO covers retirees, yes, it does. I have spoken to the Blue Cross reps about this. The PPO, as everyone knows, does exist in all of the area communities, it has not had a detrimental effect on the health of any of the retirees or any of the employees in those communities, it works very well, it's very popularly received, and it does cover retirees.
Mr. Mayor, just, just one last comment, please.
Counsel Caulfield and Counsel--
Thank you. I neglected to bring this report forward, I thank, wanna thank you for giving me ample time to do this. This is the cost of the three insurance plans in this city. HMO for family plan, it's $19,232 a year, with the employee contributing 25% of that. The PPO is $21,368 a year, the employee contributing 25%. Master Medical-- Master medical is $24,040 a year, and the employee contributes 25% of that. It's $5,000 more than an HMO plan, and I personally believe an HMO plan is just as good or probably better than a master plan. I've been in the operating room at Mass General, and so has my wife, and I've been serviced by the finest surgeons you can imagine on an HMO plan, and I haven't received a bill yet. So that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Broderick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this motion is tremendously premature. We had a motion last week that we voted on to set up some meetings. I sat here. I asked Mr. Manager for you to come back with a plan similar to... Not the same type of plan, but similar to what we did when we rolled out the new trash collection, okay? This is a very, very concerning and hot topic for anyone that's involved. And a week later, guess what? Nobody has any more better information than they did last week. We still have people in the galley who... Thank you. That may be the last time you've laughed for me, but we have people in the galley still who don't know they can get a PPO as a retiree. You're sitting here saying that they can. I think what we need to do is dispose of this, vote to rescind, that's my opinion, and have our meeting on the 15th. If we need to have subsequent meetings, that's wonderful. I think we're dangerously close here to interfering in negotiations. You know, Mr. Georges, you do a great job for your constituents, and your, I think, goal here is to retain... I think you said it, retain the master medical. Our manager, as you said, his goal is to get rid of master medical. Our constituents are the taxpayers. We have to be sensitive to our employees and our retirees. And I think the number one thing we need to do is educate people, inform them so they can make a decision, a determination. Councillor Caulfield has the insurance he does. He likes it. He thinks it's the best fit for him. That doesn't mean it's the best fit for anybody else sitting in this room. However, I truly believe that people don't understand the options and the coverage and the consequences to themselves, not only the city, and that we need to do that. To sit here and debate it over and over and to interfere in the collective bargaining process, which I think we're dangerously close to doing... You know, Mr. Georges wants to bargain, 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 but only after he takes away your ability, Mr. Manager, to go bargain and get the best deal for the residents. I don't think that that's fair, and I don't think that's a wise move for the council to do, you know? But this can be achieved through meetings and education so that we come up with the best result. That's what works best in law. It doesn't have to be... No one has to be hit over the head. We don't have to accuse people of being secretive or not wanting to meet or stalling. I think there's some good points here. I don't recall any collective bargaining over health insurance and getting rid of the master medical till we took the vote here to implement and force the PPO or the HMO, whatever it was, three years ago, okay? And there's been some collective bargaining since then to increase... And I appreciate that on the school side, Mr. Georges, to increase the participation. So I would expect we can continue to do that. But we have to educate folks. We have a whole group here of retirees that I think have been pushed out in front as the folks, you know, that the reason why we shouldn't do this. And I think that we need to have some educational seminars or meetings to let people know that there are options and that these things will be covered or may be covered. And if they're not, then we need to talk about cost. You know, Mr. Malloy came up for speaker of the night and talked about the fact that, you know, you wouldn't increase your prices, double your prices overnight. The difficulty we're faced with as a council here, okay, and you are as the manager and the administration, is these increases didn't happen overnight. These increases weren't addressed over the last 10-plus years, maybe 20 years. And the fact that we're sitting here now with a bill that we can't pay and that we have to sit here and make decisions that, you know what, we're going to close a school so that we can pay the extra money for health insurance because we don't want to meet and we don't want to negotiate or discuss it. We can take that line and send everybody home happy and feeling like their concerns were addressed. But the reality is, which fire station do we want to close? Okay? Because that's what it's going to come down to, Councillor. We're going to close fire stations, close schools, lay off people and not have services, tell our kids the parks... You know what? We can't afford to pick up the glass at the parks. You know, you're going to have 30 kids in a classroom and we won't have reading, you know, specialties. And it's going to be... We've already had meetings on this, and to take this up again, I think, is just... It's borderline ridiculous at this point without having more information. And, you know, we're being asked to take a vote that could cost us. And I say "could" because we don't even know yet what the voluntary participation would be, okay? And that's the whole point of this. But it could cost us millions of dollars that we're going to have to cut. So we can go home, tell our kids, our grandkids, our great-grandkids that their education's going to suffer even more because we don't want to, you know, have meetings and let the manager do his job, but respectfully, and include more people at this point. And I understand the difficulty here with bargaining. You know, we're asking the city manager, "Meet, meet, meet, meet," okay? For what? Who's meeting? They don't even... There hasn't been discussions yet. They're starting to formulate and starting to do their dance of who's going to negotiate, when, who's going to get what seat at the table, and whatever other games are played behind closed doors that none of us should be participating in, okay? The reality is, we have to let the manager do his job. And we have to represent our constituents and do what makes the most sense for everybody. And I don't think that means we have to strip everybody of their health insurance. I don't think anyone's going to be... We're going to be signing any death sentence or anything so dramatic. I think it's a matter of educating people and bringing people to the table, which I don't think will happen if we rescind this vote. Quite frankly, if we rescind this vote, bargaining is going to be gone. We're back to the status quo. And we can't afford that. It's that simple. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else in the motion? I'm sorry, Councillor Murphy had his hand up, then Councillor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last week, I think revived a discussion about healthcare in general that I think was important and clearly still is. But I think there needs to be a greater effort to really understand each other, to understand both the manager's perspective, our perspective, and those currently working and retired. The manager certainly does care. And it may seem hard to believe, but he does care about... But he does care about how you go about providing healthcare in a way that doesn't endanger that commitment over the long term. We may disagree about how we go about achieving that. But even last week, I spoke with his executive assistant, and she has already scheduled an appointment with the cardiologist for a transplant, so we'll see how that takes. And hopefully, the HMO covers that. But at the same time, I think there needs to be, you know, a recognition that retirees have given their lives, decades, of service to this city. And that not only that they're not selfish, that in many cases, it's quite the opposite. As Mr. Flynn had talked about last week, really, many have put their lives in danger, really great considerable risk to themselves. And so I think there needs to be greater mutual respect so that we really can begin to work at this problem, which threatens not only services throughout the city, not only healthcare to the retirees, but healthcare to everyone. The vote back in July, the reason why I voted against it in the first place was because we hadn't had that discussion. There was plenty of opportunity, I think, at that point, which I raised a number of times, to send it to the subcommittee, to have that discussion, to involve the people that are most affected by these decisions. And so it's not... It doesn't just fall on the manager to call meetings all the time. We, as a council, had that opportunity to give people the opportunity to speak. So I think what we ought to take, both from July and last week, is that there is a process to be followed. The motion that I made last week didn't call to rescind the home rule petition. I don't think that's viable right now at this point. The votes clearly aren't there. But it was to get a better understanding for not just people who are affected by it, but for councils themselves, to understand what exactly this home rule petition would do, what authority it would give the manager. Because it really isn't analogous entirely to what the authority of the state has. There is a 15-member commission that the Group Insurance Commission has with both management and labor representatives. So it isn't quite analogous. And so it's to get at these greater... These more detailed ideas that would be a part of this petition. For example, the contribution amount. In legislation made at the state level, there was provisions that that contribution amount wasn't to be, you know, just unilaterally given up or changed. It was to be negotiated through a process. The how we come to change co-pays and deductibles and all of that has to be worked out, I think. And that was the report that I was asking for last week, so that we can begin to hammer out some guidelines on how that authority is to be used. And that would mean, really, in the same way that the council adopted a financial management policy, that it adopted investment policy with the budget back in July, back in June, rather, you know, the same way that we had an updated procurement policy, that we would come up with some guiding principles on how this was to be used. And so I think, really, at this point, until we have a report back, until there is greater discussion, it doesn't make sense to bring this motion forward, that we have to come back, have that subcommittee meeting that was set up. We created a new subcommittee and we never held a meeting. We have to let the process play out and then make those changes so that everybody fully understands what it is they're voting on, what it is this home rule petition would do. And then hopefully, in the meantime, maybe that the conditions are there for a fair settlement to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I take exception with the wording that this motion is premature. I only said that it was a drastic measure, and it's a shame that I had to make such a motion in a drastic measure to rescind a vote and go back on what we already had done. But I thought that we got a lot of discussion this evening. For one thing, I... We all learned that you could go to Florida on a PPO and still have your insurance. I bet half of us here didn't even know that. And I know that the votes aren't here. I didn't think they would be, but I made the motion for a chance to get back and reassure it. My mother always said, "Three times for the normal mind." That's two already. I don't want to go a third and make this again. But so that I don't embarrass anybody here, I would move to amend my motion, and I know that I can do that according to Robert's Rules of Parliamentary Procedure, to postpone indefinitely this motion. And that means I can bring it back at any time. But as right now, I just wanted the people to get another chance to hold us at our feet to the fire because I think things can happen. I think we're getting there, and I like input. And they know our numbers. They can call us if things aren't working out the way that they should be. But this was a motion to do that. That's why I brought it forward, so we could have a chance to sit down again. And I know, Mr. Manager, that you're going to do everything possible to make sure this happens, as you already have started the process on December 15th. So I hope that we can work something out. I believe we could. We haven't even voted on this home rule petition, and yet they've been saving money. And I know that we have to. Jim Leary was very eloquent when he came here to speak. It's hard to say, "We're going to lay you off, but we're going to spend here." I know that it's difficult, but maybe perhaps it seemed premature, but I had to do the drastic motion to get everybody back again. I think the more we meet, the more we discuss, the more informative we are. That's what good government's all about. We don't want to take people and hurt people. We want to say, "You worked here 35 years. I'm not going to shut the door in your face." I don't think we want to do that. Yet, I know it's costly. I want to know what means of being placed on people coming into the city right now to work here. I mean, are they getting the same options available to them or what? I don't know. But I'll be looking forward to your report, Mr. Manager. Put it together. And I know Councillor Elliott has a similar motion, which I think we need answers. We all do need answers. So that's the gist of my motion, to amend, to postpone indefinitely, which can be brought back at any time.
Before I recognize Councillor Elliott, because he did have his hand up. So we have a substitute motion on the floor to amend, to postpone indefinitely.
Right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councillor Caulfield.
You could say I'm amending my own motion to read... Sure, whatever.
Thank you. On the substitute motion, Councillor Elliott or I know that... I recognize Councillor Martin.
Councillor Martin. Is that allowed? I mean, I, you know, we've brought people down here two weeks in a row asking for a vote. I think we should have the vote.
Well, again, you can vote. You can...
So I'd like to know what...
I'll defer to the...
Just a point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Your point of order, Councillor Martin.
Well, is this move to just amend this, delay this indefinitely, is that permitted under the rules? That's my question.
I'll defer to the solicitor.
There is a procedure under the rules to postpone indefinitely, and it's in the form of a subsidiary motion, like all other motions. It's actually the lowest motion you can possibly take. Any other motion takes precedent to this motion. Anybody that has the floor would take precedent to this motion. And like any other motion, it would have to be seconded, and then it would have to pass. If it fails, then the original motion is back on the table to be voted on.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any comments on the substitute. I made my comments last week, and I think they don't need to be repeated here again tonight. Thank you.
Any discussion on the substitute motion, Councillor Elliott? No? On the substitute motion?
Yes, roll call on that.
Roll call.
Councillor Elliott?
No.
Councillor Martin?
No.
Councillor Mendoza?
No.
Councillor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazzo?
No.
Councillor Murphy?
No.
Councillor Broderick?
No.
Councillor Caulfield?
Yes.
Councillor Dakota?
No.
Motion fails.
The original motion is back on the floor. Councillor Mendoza?
Yeah, well, just a comment on the issue before us. I did speak at the last meeting, and my feelings from then haven't changed that much. I appreciate everyone that's come down and made their feelings known. As I said last week, I would like to see the retirees at the table and have a voice and be able to voice their concerns during these issues related to the insurance coverage. There's still obviously a difference of opinion, so someone is wrong. And we do need to learn more about it so that we can clear that up. It could be... I know that maybe it's people on the Medicare that may have restrictions on being in the PPO, but our retirees who are ineligible for Medicare, I believe, would be eligible for the PPO. And, I mean, the big issue from my standpoint financially for the city and making sure that would financially sound going forward is that, bottom line, we have a self-insured plan. So every time we pay for a surgery, pay for prescriptions, ultimately, that money needs to be replenished, and it's going to come back from the premiums that people pay. 25% from the insured, 75% from the city that contributes to the self-insurance fund. I heard rumor that there was being a push to change it from a 25% contribution to a 50. I don't think that's correct. I could be wrong. I think what was being talked about was the differential between the PPO and the master medical, because right now, it's capped at 25%. And so I could be wrong, but again, that's things that need to be clarified. It needs to be determined exactly which one it is, and then we can move forward. And I don't see any urgency in rescinding our vote because it's, by what others have stated... stated, it's not going to come up until May or June of next year. And between now and then, there's lots of time to negotiate and come out with something that's workable for both the unions and our management. And make no mistake about it, as the city councilor here, we're part of management. We oversee management. And I want to be sympathetic to our employees. I want to make sure that they're treated fairly. But there is a larger picture that I have to look out for, and that's the city as a whole. And I think that the process needs to go forward before we remove one of the tools that we have. And negotiations, it would be the way to do that, and I would encourage that it be done in negotiations.
Thank you. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a thought, as Counselor Mendoza was speaking, we're having a meeting December 15th, 3:00 to 5:00 at the auditorium. There could be a snowstorm that day, the day before. It's getting cold out. The folks that are most concerned are retirees. It may be difficult for them to get out in that weather, depending on the weather, or just to get out that time of day. And, Mr. Manager, if you could consider possibly having some type of meeting here that could be televised and potentially broadcast to these folks at home, so they have an opportunity to see it at home, and maybe not have to come out in the middle of winter.
Excuse me, Counselor. We're going to televise the meeting on the 15th.
At the auditorium?
At the auditorium, yes. Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Dakota, then?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I spoke about this last week, highlighting the respect that all of us in this room have for both our active employees and our retired employees, and I appreciate you all being here again tonight. I did happen to mention, though, that I would have to be in support of this home rule petition unless I got a clear sense that between last week and this week, there were great efforts to negotiate. I would like to just read to you a quote from the email that I received today that was sent out to the union members, United Teachers Lowell Union Members. Just a quote, it says, "Retirees are being depicted as selfish, old, and dramatic individuals who don't really care about parents and children and the majority of taxpayers, and just want the highest and most costly insurance plans." If these are the conversations that you're having amongst each other, you don't understand what it is that we are trying to do. We are not making judgments about you or your needs or your concerns. We are trying to balance our responsibility to you with our responsibility to the rest of the taxpayers in the city. Counselor Mercier mentioned several times about the value of this discussion. I don't hear discussion. I hear whispering behind me. I hear critique. I hear anger. And I hear one side of the story from in front of me, something else from behind me. We clearly need more information, and not just from you, but from our city manager. And I appreciate the motion that Counselor Patrick made and this one that Counselor Elliott is making. But we must proceed with this. It's the next move in the chess game, unfortunately, and I will support the home rule petition until we can all understand that we do have common issues and we need to commonly respect each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the motion? Hearing none? Roll call.
Counselor Elliott?
No.
Counselor Martin?
No.
Counselor Mendoza?
No.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Mayor Melonazo?
No.
Counselor Murphy?
No.
Counselor Broderick?
No.
Counselor Caulfield?
No.
Counselor Dakota?
No.
Motion fails. One yea, eight nays.
Motion fails. One yea, eight nays. Moving on, the next motion, which is also pertinent to folks here in the audience this evening, by Counselor Elliott. City Council requests the city manager to develop plans and procedures relative to health insurance for retirees. Second by Counselor Mendoza. Counselor Elliott?
When I filed the motion, I didn't know the manager had set up a meeting, so I think that's a first step in the right direction. And not to belabor a lot of the discussion, it's already taken place. But I think we all do feel, Mr. Manager, people are upset. They've been down here two weeks in a row. They're concerned. I personally, they feel that they're left out. I don't believe it was intentional. That's just the way that the process is. I don't know what the plans are, Mr. Manager. I don't know how we prepare as we move forward. But what I do know is that something has to be done for the retirees here. But on a larger scale, something has to be done with our costs. And I know we've gone through this. We all spoke about it last week. We cannot sit here and do nothing, because the same people in this room are going to say, "Why are my taxes going up?" And I don't blame them. Why are the services not as good as they should be? Why are we down 40 police officers? Why are stations closing? Why are our classrooms 30, 35 children? What is happening? So this is one part of it. I still think that we need plan design. I think you need plan design. Not to ignore the people who are in this room, not to ignore the unions, but to bring together a better process for you as a chief administrator. Why? Because if you don't get 100% compliance from 17 unions, nothing can change. And it doesn't have to be that it's going to be an increase, or we're going to shift the cost to 50/50, or 70/30. But we need some leverage. Right now, our hands are tied, and all we're left doing is either raising taxes or cutting services. And there has to be a better way. And that's the reason why I filed this motion. I think the people in this room should be included. I don't think they should be left out. And I think we all agree. And I hope, I know I'm speaking for all my colleagues, and you as well. What that is, I don't know, but maybe it's a protocol that the manager bring forward whatever option. Should this bill pass, by the way? I mean, the term is about to expire. So whether this home rule goes forward or not in the future session, I don't know. But something has to be done. And moving forward, some protocol has to be put in place to include the people in this room, so they feel that they do have a voice and that their opinion does mean something. So that's the gist of the motion.
Thank you. We do have one person registered to speak, Mr. Goldman.
Mr. Mayor, members of Lowell City Council, Mr. Manager, ladies and gentlemen. For the record, my name is Mark Goldman, 58 Oakland Street, Lowell, Mass. You know, listening to the debate last week and this week, I have one story to tell you. A gentleman I know very well, he was on the Lowell Police Force for some 30-plus years. He retired in 1975, January 1975. He lived a very healthy life for about 15, 16 years, until about 1991. He was on Mast Medical, and he developed a brain tumor. It was removed. Mast General, it was paid for, completely with Mast Medical. It happened again about a year later. Only half of it was able to be removed. Again, Mast Medical. Third time it come back, it could be removed because of his age. The gentleman was my dad. And Mast Medical paid for that whole thing. We wouldn't have had a house. And it also happened when my mom got sick. And she had breast cancer, and she was paralyzed. She was in a nursing home the last year of her life. And again, Mast Medical, she was under my father's plan, under Mast Medical. Had paid. Again, if it hadn't, we would have lost the house where I lived at that time in the Lowell Highlands. So, Mr. Manager, please, the retirees should have been brought to the table in the beginning of this thing. There should have been these seminars back in the summer. I know it's hot, you know, the summers are hot, but it should have happened. Glad that at least the process is starting, but it started kind of late. Thank you.[1488.33][1488.33](applause)
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Goldman. Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Murphy?
Thank you. I don't want to belabor the point, but we have to make sure, as a council, that we recognize our role to deliberate. And, you know, back in July, this came before us, and there was a rush to get it off to the state legislature, you know, in the belief that, contrary to all prior evidence, that they would act quickly on something. And, you know, you can't just hand over that kind of authority without recognizing the full implications. And so I think we really ought to go through the entire process, as before, and make sure that, you know, we fully understand what this would mean. And then we can go, begin to develop some guidelines, as I say. And, you know, certainly, the intent of my motion last week to include the retirees in that discussion. Those that are affected most by it ought to be involved. And I know Counselor Broderick had brought the point up as a verbal motion. So, you know, of course, I support the motion, but I think we have to more fully understand what it is we're voting on at all points.
Thank you. Counselor Dakota, did you have your hand up? Anyone else on the motion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Thank you. Last motion of the evening. Before we move on, again, I want to thank you all for being here and participating. I also want to recognize and acknowledge that School Committee Man John Leahy has been with us this evening as well. Thank you, Mr. Leahy. Last motion of the evening by Counselor Broderick. City Council requests the city manager to report on the feasibility and process of instituting a STAT program in the school department. Second? Second by Counselor Martin. Counselor Broderick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know there's a fine line here between us voting on a budget and interfering or having our hands in a budget, and I'm not looking to cross that line or to do that. But this wasn't intentionally timed to come out with the report, but we had a meeting two weeks ago, I think? Was it two weeks ago already? With the subcommittee, with the school department, I mean, I'm sorry, the school committee. And we were given some, to me, anyway, some alarming news and some potentially devastating numbers. Hopefully, we can work it out. But I think that if we could, I know there's some other cities, there's a Somerville, some other cities, I believe it's cities, that are doing this now, trying to implement it further into the city government. And if you could come back with a report, I'm certainly not looking to overstep and tell the school department or school committee or anybody what to do, but there are some things that we fund or that we're responsible for. Maybe we could implement this on that side and potentially, you know, find some savings and efficiencies there that might help ease the blow of the next two cycles of budgets that we're looking at. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Broderick. Anyone else on the motion? Counselor Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we could refer that report, once it's come back to us, to that same subcommittee meeting, because I think it would fit in with, you know, where we take the STAT program from here. Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Pose the vote. Motion to adjourn by Counselor Caulfield.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before we adjourn, I just want to thank the administration. There was a bad sinkhole on Wilder Street covered with a steel plate, and should it snow, that plate was going to be pushed off to the side. And I want to thank Mayor Gilson Henry Marchand for addressing that issue, because it could have caused a serious accident. Thank you.
Before we do adjourn, I'd like to close by wishing everyone a happy Thanksgiving, happy holiday, and to, again, invite everyone downtown on Saturday for the holiday stroll. And we're actually going to have the Christmas parade beginning at 4:00, and we'll have the tree lighting ceremony around 6:00. So I hope to see you all on Saturday, November 27th. Thank you. Motion to adjourn? Don't move. Second? Thank you.[1764.98][1764.98](music)[1765.98][1765.98]